Good evening and welcome to. Good evening and welcome to the annual town meeting of Stanley Town Council. I'd like to welcome you all here this evening. If at some point you want to ask a question, could you please raise your hand and tell us your name and then question and we do our best to answer it. We move on to item two, which is apologies for this evening. We have apologies from Harold Allison for this on holiday. We have apologies from Alice Plaid who is unwell. We have apologies from Carol Hanson again who has been well. We have apologies from James. We have the personal reason, apologies for Janice Holmes, more than families unfortunately. We will meet here soon. We move on to item three, the minutes of the annual town meeting on the twenty eighth of May, twenty twenty four. We are asked to note the minutes and to. Are we all agreed? Thank you. We move on to item four. This is the report from the town mayor, the outgoing town mayor. Unfortunately, Harold is good and let's have a great tribute to stay in our room.
This is the report from Alborn Mayor Carol Hanson. As I reflect on my twelve month there with Stanley, words cannot express what a great honour it is to stand with people. Stanley is a wonderful community full of interesting, engaged and helpful people. Some in our community have had their lives, have lived here all their lives, as did their parents and grandparents and generation before them. Others have arrived here much more recently, but I believe strongly that everyone who goes along here can have something to offer. I want to thank my fellow councillors for putting their trust in me carriedly under dating so much I was elected to the council. Thank you also to all the recent town council staff who work tirelessly behind scenes and in all of the events to ensure everyone's feelings through this. Thank you to councillor Collette for stepping into my shoes when I want to be able to attend events. During this year, I have met so many wonderful people. We have so many self listed individuals, individual quality service and group services providing invaluable service to all community. I've had the great honour to represent the town at civic events and of course the whole day's events such as our own major war where we eventually then directly to individuals who go on the book and beyond in our communities. I have many treasured memories of this year, including the return of the commemorative serviette which is now on further leash at Blair James and James. The serviette declares the name of all hundred sixty eight boys and men who were killed in the explosion in nineteen oh nine. This alongside the services of Beemish and that of Stanley, acting a sovereign and poignant reminder that one of the worst mindings of actors in concrete Durham, something which we was never forget. Our remembrance day services at Selton One Memorial Park and the beacon lighting on Stanley Front Street again demonstrates our respect for those who have served and have served for potential. I was proud of attendees and in my past being mayor. Seeing the faces, the children light up, the sparks cleared to the crown on the front street was a joy and I look forward to attending Christmas celebrations this year. Thank you to all of these who have attended and supported our event. May I also offer my sincere and heartfelt thanks to all Alborn councillors who have served the council and the residents of Stanley. I know that their hard work, dedication and commitment have been so valuable. As we move forward on new league, elected council, I wish them every success and terminal their duty and responsibility to the residents of Stanley. It is now my pleasure to hand over the mantle to the new mayor, group chair, who I know will do an amazing job of representing council particularly staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item five, which is the report from the political leader as we have a back point. And unfortunately, Jeanette, this is very well, so that's going to be. That's good.
This is a report from the Alborn leader, Stephenson. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give a final leaders' report at the meeting tonight where we can celebrate the work of Stanley Town Council, which has been here since our last annual meeting in twenty twenty four. We've done, we began work last year with Carver Homes on several projects to do with regeneration of the front streets in Stanley. These included how to refurbish and refurbish the old ward school, refresh the front street shop runs through accessing DCC ground. Northumberland Bloom with a great success for the council in twenty twenty four. Across this year, Stanley Town Council have undertaken its important role in the community rather than entering as an organisation. This is allowing our community group to shine in their own right while ensuring they're given the support needed. Events in Stanley, the mayor's award was a smaller event this year using slightly different format of an awards ceremony in afternoon day with that the court did to celebrate our local hero who volunteered tirelessly for their local community. Some events programmed took place at end of year and was attended by over three thousand residents and seen that with excellence. On fourth of year was another great success with stalls, exhibits in the DLI and the Lord Lieutenant in attendance. It was fantastic experience and very well attended. Stanley fireworks as usual were so well attended with over twelve thousand local residents enjoying. Bloomingford Goodstone with a great success with some great local entities across all categories. Their evening is a great celebration again for what our wonderful residents give back to their communities. Remembrance weekend was full of solemn, respectful events supporting delivered by this community in Stanley Town Council. Supporting allotments across the area has been new and extremely major and urgent for the council. This is something we will continue to deliver and develop across the coming year. I would finally like to pay a tribute to all our wonderful staff in Stanley Town Council for their hard work, work across this year. They've been a wonderful team and I applaud their dedication. It has been a full and exciting year for Stanley Town Council and I'm sure the coming year will continue to build upon the work undertaken across the previous the previous one, which all the councils or staff members all knew the very best insurance that Stanley Town Council continue to deliver to the residents in our area. Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to move to item seven to item six. Item seven is the financial performance and I'm going to hand over to the wrong me to present our teams.
Thank you, Chair. Well, it's just a short update, but really a bit of backup because there may be some people taking interest for the first time here. So we have finance committee which has responsibility for ensuring that council meets its legal requirements. This involves recording and backup of proper accounts, monitoring payments made by the council, ensuring that they're lawful and in accordance with the financial regulations and consistent with decisions that councils made. This assists with budget setting, reviews and monitors expenditure and performance and reviews and recommends action against any issues identified by the auditor. The financial outturn position for this year ending twenty four, twenty five shows that the overall budget was underspent by two hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighty pounds. This was mainly attributed to vacancies and a lack of resorts which led to savings across all of the budgets. This service has increased our resource levels to one point seven six million and ninety seven pounds. Less commitments for twenty five, twenty six and the three month operating costs which we have to keep, which sees this reduced to five hundred and eighty three thousand, nine hundred and seventy six pounds. The budget for twenty five, twenty six was set taking into consideration the increase in national insurance contributions which we were able to offset against savings in vacancies to keep the precept increase to a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We move on to presentations from our partners. Unfortunately, Carver Homes aren't with us this evening and neither panel of networks, but on your seats there should be some reports that they have given to us for this evening. If you're free to take us home and if there's any questions on the, please contact us later. If you'd like to hand over to PCC, Graham Hall.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now, Graham Hall, I'm the Deputy Police and Crime Commissioner. And can I give apologies for Joy Allen tonight who would have clearly liked to have been here, but she's otherwise engaged. I also offer the apologies of actual inspector Terry Archibald, who can't be seen. Members may be aware or not, there's recently been a change in relation to supervision of the neighbourhood policing team. And I'm pleased first of all to let you know that inspector Andrew Liddell, Andy Liddell will be our new neighbourhood inspector in the immediate future. As I speak, Terry Archibald will come aboard because as you know, dear Stuart, for those of you who knew, retired a little time ago. So what I'll do tonight is, I'll cover a number of issues, which is a strategic update in the police crime commissioner's office. But also I am in a position to talk about some of the other issues and I'm also having a interview from the local meeting for your information. So what I'll do in the twenty minutes, I think, Chair, is that I'll focus on the review of policing nationally. I'll talk a little bit about safer streets mission and how that impacts on you being in Stanley. I'll then talk about police crime justice plan, which is your plan according to your needs. We'll talk a little bit about hotspots and the action fund which has been, if you like, awarded by government to forces and local PCCs. I'll focus a little bit on performance just to let you know how things are going and then more importantly, I'll talk on the local policing issues. And then I'll take questions in court with the chair's instructions. So in relation to police reform, I think most people will be aware that the police service has gone through quite a lot of reform recently. We know that the pace of life is changing, society's demands are great. And we as a police organisation have got to change with that rate of change. We have to ensure that we invest in the right technologies and clearly we do know that there has been certain incidents nationally, I would emphasise nationally, which has had a big impact on public confidence in policing. And so we know that as a police in UK, there is some distance to go. We know the criminal justice system is a challenge at the moment. I think most people will be aware of that. And on some occasions, our victims and witnesses feel a little let down. We also know clearly we have to present value for money in anything that we do. And we've got to make the best use of collaboration, working with partners and reduce bureaucracy so that we can spend more time on the streets. That being recognised by government, clearly the safer streets mission is the way that the government is taking the agenda forward with particular focus on violence against women and girls, knife crime and indeed street crime around retail crime and also antisocial behaviour. They saw a focus on some of those issues. And there will be a new government reform roadmap launched in the near future detailing all of those activities. But perhaps one of the big things which is an impact on yourselves, because if I was to ask how many people are happy and satisfied at the level of visible policing on our streets, I'm sure nobody will put their hands up and say I'm satisfied. I'd like to see more police officers on the street. So as a result of that, the government has invested significantly in terms of the neighbourhood policing guarantee. What that basically means is there is more funding for police services to our country in relation to neighbourhood policing. So you will see in the near future more neighbourhood policing officers on the streets, but you will also not have the abstractions of your neighbourhood policing term. Because quite often in the past, your neighbourhood officers, your police constables, your PCSOs have been abstracted from their normal day to day duties to do other things in response to incidents. That will be minimised in the future. So hopefully you will see some difference in like the feedback in relation to that as time moves on. You will each have a neighbourhood officer in your areas as identifiable, with more than a near, and that will be your local contact. And we hope to ensure that we also improve the contact through local media such as the PAT. And I know that PAT works well in some cases and perhaps not as well in others, but clearly we intend to improve that. The neighbourhood guarantee nationally gives a growth of about thirteen thousand officers over the next few years. In terms of Durham, it's a lot less than that, but what I am pleased to report is an additional twenty six officers who will be shortly joining us and they will be going on to our teams globally. So your teams will be, if you like, enlarged. In terms of the police reform, clearly we are on the spotlight as a police service. We've got to provide that value for money. So there will be, if you like, increased performance expectations for high quality responses, there'll be new performance units in Westminster monitoring our work and clearly that is going to be backed up by a new national centre of excellence policing to ensure that we make the best use of technology and forensics and also the technology that exists. We'll also be focusing more on prevention going forward. I know there'll be a lot of members within the meeting this evening who remember, I'm not going to refer to the good old days, but we did focus a lot on prevention and clearly we know that there is a place for prevention of which you all play a very important part. There are other challenges that exist. I mentioned from the justice system. We know that the backlog's in our courts this moment in time and the numbers in our prisons is causing significant charge on the justice system. Clearly the police have probably arrested more people than what they have in the past and that's all making a very, very complicated national picture. But again, there's reviews going on and we will do everything that we can to improve our services to victims and I'll come back to that. There's also additional work in relation to investigation contacts. So one of the big problems that the public have highlighted to the police crime commission, the chief constable over recent years is contact. It's not easy to get in contact with the police via the one or one or the three lines. And we are making improvements in relation to our speed. There's been increased resource from the control room and also we have automated number of systems and again, we hope to see improvements. Again, if you said what improvements are already occurring, we are reducing the number of time, the amount of time it takes to answer calls in relation to emergency calls. And also we are giving, in fact, an improved response through our territory network as well in terms of the switchboard. And we also want to invest going forward as a local force, but largely as well in relation to young people. And we're going to be embarking on a strategy within County Durham and Darlington to look at what we can do to improve our youth support provision across partners as well. And finally, the additional areas of work nationally is in relation to rural brown buildings being controlled nationally in relation to solar water. So we are, if you like, continuing to follow in that respect. In terms of the police and crime commissioner, the areas that Joy Allen focuses on in terms of leadership role nationally, just to give you an idea, because these are the areas where clearly you may want us to influence the national agenda and we will do that on your behalf. Clearly is around finance. She has a lead in relation to finance, groups and alcohol, road policing and also sustainability and rambling. So that are her main priorities in terms of the national portfolio. In terms of locally, the police crime and justice plan, we went down to consultation throughout County Durham and Darlington on the sixth of September, last April, then fourth of November. We went to various public engagement events. We attracted, sorry, one thousand four hundred responses through social media. And as a result of that engagement, linking with the communities themselves, we identified five key issues which we take in form as priorities on your behalf. In terms of those particular five priorities, exactly social behaviour and nuisance, public told us that clearly we have a role to play, a significant role in terms of tackling and reducing. There was also areas introduced around series and organised crime concerns from the public and that becomes one of our priorities. As far as violence against women and girls, also highlighted as one of our five key issues was road policing, trying to make our roads safer and also policing visibility. And we're already like improving the visibility, but that's to be judged by yourselves moving forward. So if you've not seen that visibility improved, I'm sure you'll give us feedback, but I would like to think that that is improved moving forward. There was two other critical issues that was identified that you want us to focus on and that was indeed off road bikes and the problems associated with those and also the drugs and alcohol linked to driving and antisocial behaviour, domestic abuse and also series of non-armed crimes, as I've mentioned. So those were some of the priorities. I won't go through the plan in depth because clearly I'll probably speak for the next hour and you wouldn't want me to do that and I'm sure the chair would kick me under the table. But in terms of the plan, just to give you a little feel of what it's going to look like in development and delivery. We're looking at a vision around safer, stronger and more resilient communities to drug and alcohol related crime and antisocial behaviour. We have a number of priorities and as you'd expect, one of them is very much about victims, putting victims in front and centre. And so the chief constable and also the PCC and all of the various agents who work with are certainly doing an awful lot to improve the victims journey. We also focused on safer people and safer places. I'll come to a little bit more depth in a woman, safer neighbourhoods, countryside, roads and also the justice system, trying to create a justice system, our contribution to, in terms of a more fair and timely system. Obviously, we're intelligence led, that's very important. What you tell us is how we release basically and that's how we've arrived at the plan. And indeed, any information, intelligence that you give to the police is very much appreciated and always has been. We react upon that particular information and that's how we follow priorities. That's how we inform the day to day policing. One of the areas where we've seen as well performing nationally is in relation to problem solving. You might have heard, you might even remember Mike Barton, who was the previous chief constable, he had a big, if you like, emphasis and focus on problem solving and that's continued within the force and we do an awful lot of work around identifying problems with your help and then using yourselves to assist us in actually identifying solutions. So the partnership approach really, really important with the public and indeed all our partners, some of which are on the table here today. We'll focus on prevention, protecting individuals, deterring offenders, detecting crime and pursuing offenders. And what will success look like, being the best at preventing crime and that sort of behaviour, it's how we're going to judge ourselves and you judges in relation to providing first class service to victims, reduce the offender, bring the offence to justice and zero reward deaths, which is very, very ambitious. But it's something that clearly we would like to achieve. I think, Chair, I won't go into the depth on each strand of the plan because I think I'll be talking, I won't be talking a long time. But if members at any time would like to have any more information about what the various themes look like, and I'll give you just a quick example of what it looks like in terms of victims, but I can talk of any of the themes, but I would want us to probably make better use of that information. It was on another agenda because you want me to get to the local policing as well. But if we focus on victims, there's one particular thing, the victim centered approach is making sure that the victim is at the centre, as I mentioned before. It's about the whole system response to victims. So it's not just about the police, it's all about criminal justice partners making sure that everybody pulls together to make sure that the victim is valued and that their needs are met at every stage in the criminal justice system. So we've got to improve the system, make sure it's match fit. We've got permission, the right service, specialist services to give the best support. And we also have a new Victims and Prisoners Act coming in legislation and we have got to ensure that those particular rights and entitlements of victims are met. And when we don't meet them, that's clearly when we will be held accountable. So we will be more accountable going forward. Under each of those themes, clearly there's an awful lot of information which I've mentioned on all of those particular areas. But if I can possibly move on in relation to some of the other issues and then I will focus very much on the local areas in Stanley. One of the areas where we've recently received government funding of two, the tune of a million pounds is in relation to hot spot policing. Again, this will complement the neighbourhood policing guarantee and we are going to be focused mainly on the town centres, but other areas where we have high levels of crime disorder to ensure that the police and other partners, namely the law authority, wardens etcetera, but anybody else who assists, focus our patrols in those particular areas at the right time, focusing the right areas on and working with you in relation to shredding problems in the town of Wiltshire. So we have a million pounds across County Durham and Darlington to increase the level of patrols, but also to identify the problems and make sure that we put in the money where the problems are. So I'm pleased to report that Stanley will be included in that particular work. In terms of victims, we recently held the victims conference where Baroness Newlove accompanied us on that conference. And what that was really was to make sure that all members of the criminal justice system are aware of what their rights are, i.e. the victims' rights and entitlements are and that we are accountable for delivery. So it was to remind partners of where we are, where we're born and the importance of the victim. In terms of antisocial behaviour, just for members' information, we've recently been awarded a national award for our contribution as partners to tackle antisocial behaviour. I'm not saying we get it right. I'm sure members may have raised some issues tonight. However, it's just to reassure you that we are seen nationally as perhaps an area that is doing some good work. In terms of local policing and focusing very much on Stanley, I'd just like to give you a very quick, and you may have had this chair before and forgive me if you have, but this is in relation to performance and some people will say that people don't report crimes these days and I accept some people do not report crimes and antisocial behaviour. I would encourage you all to report it, otherwise we don't have an accurate picture. But in terms of, that was reported last year, when we compare last year with the year before. I'm pleased to report that in the Stanley area in terms of reporting crime, we see a reduction of thirteen percent. And when you compare twenty five, the twelve months before, the twelve months before that, so twenty four with twenty five, thirteen percent reduction, reductions overall in all violent categories. We've seen a slight increase in relation to sexual offences, some of which is historical reporting. In terms of robbery, the thefts, the burglaries and the bail crime, again, reductions. We did see an increase in relation to retail crime. Nationally, we've seen some significant increases. You were seeing nationally, some of the reports on the media highlighting some of the challenges that areas actually face. You had an increase in forty percent, which was around about fifty offences more when you compared it with the previous year, so risiko. But there's an awful lot of work going on at this moment in time. And again, I'm pleased to report that we have one of the best result rates in the country at this moment in time in terms of arrests and detections. And but we don't, if you like, be complacent about that and there's more work to be done to get the reductions. But at one time, that increase was significantly higher and it's now a lot lower. We have had an increase in racially aggravated crime. That occurred when, at the time of the riots last year, we had increased reports at that particular time and they have reduced in terms of the trends more recently. And in terms of antisocial behaviour, again, when compared to yours, we've seen a four percent reduction, which looks like about forty incidents less over the period. So in terms of some of the main indicators, and I accept that people don't report crime, then clearly it's not recorded, but it's just an indication as to indeed what has been happening. On a local basis and linking this with the local report, again, I've added the apologies of Sergeant Archibald. He would like me to comment on the excellent work of relationships in the Stanley town area with the public, but also with the neighbourhood wardens, housing and during county council in terms of generating some fantastic results. And we know that there's been considerable tension and community concerns following a dreadful incident in Stanley, i.e. Southmore shooting. A horrific incident and clearly our thoughts, I'm sure your thoughts and all our thoughts are with family and friends with the outcome of what happened on that occasion. Clearly I'm limited to what I can say in terms of that investigation, but clearly it is going through the criminal justice system. For what the sergeant, the inspector and the team would like me to acknowledge is the absolute support from the community at that time of great need. And it was a very, very challenging scenario, a very tragic incident for all involved. But his comments is that the sense of community and coming together was absolutely apparent during one very challenging time. In terms of some of the issues that's been highlighted, you love the neighbourhood team, problems in the area. One is in relation to speeding vehicles and some members of the community yourselves may have seen, had it outlined that the camera van has been active in the Stanley areas. I don't know whether anybody's noticed that. Hopefully you're not one of these statistics. But unfortunately, unfortunately, generally you look at it, there has been a number of people apprehended in relation to speeding. And just during the month of March twenty five, a hundred and eighty three people have been referred to awareness courses. Ie they've been prosecuted but decided on the awareness course as an option. And there's twenty five people being fined who had penalty points and five are subject to court action. So you can see just in one month, there's an awful lot of people who have been speeding. In relation to drug related activity, we know it's in connection with other crimes, theft, burglary and the retail crime. Again, this is very much based on the information we receive from you yourselves. We do take action and it's worth mentioning at times you might feel that, well, they're not doing anything with that information. What are they actually doing? What are they actually doing? Sometimes it takes a while to build the intelligence picture, the information picture, to enable officers to get on, which they have done. And they've executed a number and there's been a number of people arrested, quantities of drugs seized within the area. And there's an awful lot of investigations pending charge and seeking rest at this particular moment in time. And on another side of the actual coin, we're also aware of some of those people who have considerable problems with addictions. And we try to work very closely with various partners to support, direct, signpost those people in the pathways, drug alcohol services. To make sure that we can get some support to tackle some of these addictions that have been in place for some time. In terms of reporting, I appreciate that not everybody is, if you like, comfortable reporting to the police, you're going to have their neighbourhood officers. I would urge you to know your neighbourhood teams and to develop that relationship and we will be instructed to start to do that. But if you would like to report information in confidence, you do have the Crime Stoppers information, which if you haven't got it, we will actually circulate it so you can report that. Another issue, which is one that clearly is of a concern, is off road bikes. Huge concern according to the neighbourhood team, I'm sure there's a few people nodding in the audience. Again, for the local neighbourhood team, it remains a top priority. There has been numerous bikes seized in recent months. Clearly, some messages have gone out about the police don't pursue. Clearly, there is a risk associated with pursuing motorcycles, clearly we do not want anybody to be injured on our roads. So we have used various tactics. We have various zones in the Stanley area, this is your section fifty nine zones. And what that does is it provides a warning to people in relation to their area, i.e. when they're driving or riding a motorcycle or other machine, antisocial. Antisocially, there is a potential for us to actually take the vehicle from them and seize, which we have done on a number of occasions. In the Stanley area, you have had plainclothes officers going out in unmarked cars. They've been particularly successful, again, resulting in various seizure. And we're going to continue that particular tactic moving forward. We've also taken the delivery of drones, you may or may not be aware that drones are operating within the area via the neighbourhood team. And again, we have had persons arrested in relation to those particular activities, using the drones and the off road bikes. And also seized vehicles as well. Working with partners and the housing agencies, if they were here tonight, they would let you know that we have been working closely with them. They are following the activities over that we are taking in terms of letters to tenants and warning the risks of the tenancy. If various orders are actually breached, and this is all with a view to preventing the storage of off road bikes premises. And more recently, the police have also worked very closely with your local filling stations in relation to fork or watch whereby. We're identifying people with unregistered vehicles, off road bikes etc. And again, it gives us an opportunity to take positive actions, which is exactly what you want us to take. Going back to the engagement opportunities, your team is committed to you. Again, I would like some feedback in relation to officer visibility, if it's good or if it's bad, I'd certainly welcome whichever it is. Again, your local team, they will be tackling those particular priorities. And again, I'd like to hear from you tonight, if we've got the right priorities, if there's other things we should be focused on moving forward. Again, your team want to engage, so please think about your local, if you like, structures, whether it be your PACs or whether you have other. If your opportunities, events where officers can go along and talk to yourselves and other members of the community. Just to reassure you as to the work that they're doing and also to continue that we get the best information possible. So I'd like to conclude at that time, Chair, I've come with a lot of information, I'd welcome any questions. But I'd just like to say in conclusion, thank you for your support, thank you for those who contributed to the consultation about the plan. Your neighbourhood team and all your other resources, but your neighbourhood team is who you have a connection with more than anyone else. They are absolutely in a position where they truly want to work with you. And I'd welcome that the good relationships that you've built up here in Stanley continues over the next twelve months. Thank you, Chair.
And I say thank you for that, maybe you're both reporting and really in depth. Does anyone have any questions? Brian?
I just saw an independent and I've been playing, we have our trouble with classes in fields and all of it, we'll be, we'll be tackled that.
Yeah.
The children, the children of Blackwood, they're going to set their alcohol.
Yes, what we have, is Brian, can you say? Yeah, what we have, Brian, is that we focus very much on the countryside now, you might say what's countryside or do the field, but obviously it's all about somebody farmers. We have put Rural Watch into place where we encourage everybody to report any information. We have an app where we can actually transfer the information to the police on a very, very quick time basis. If somebody's observed committing offences, well, then you ring three nights, it's a crime and action, we'll take immediate response.
You mean essentially the time again?
Oh.
You know, is it three times?
Absolutely. So we want the information, we want to make sure that other people are aware. Are other people aware of that particular problem? Are farmers aware? Are other members of the community? We want everybody to be our eyes and ears, we want that report, we want that information. The information comes in, it may be Graham Hall's the person who suspected of that offence, he had a balaclava, we'll build the picture up. If we can take action, positive action, then clearly we'll do that. On the other side of it, we need to get the messages out about the impact that that has on farmers, landowners and the police as well.
Here over here.
Exactly, and I understand all those things. What I would encourage you to do, and please keep in contact with us, because as we're going forward, we're developing our Rural Watch, we're developing our countryside approach. We have wildlife offset, but we also have the neighbourhood teams who are focused on the wildlife and the rural issues. Linking with the farmers, Dawn, myself, there have been a number of meetings with Farm Watch members. We want that information, please keep it coming in and we'll also concentrate on trying to educate people about the impact of those actions. The other thing is that fire and rescue are a real good partner and we'd like to use them. So if we've got particular problems here, we will work with them, we'll put the events, we'll put the schools, we'll go to anywhere possible to actually educate and pass the message on.
The jurors, right, and what's, you get for that part of the jury.
Right, well, in that case, you know, we need to be making sure we're sharp in terms of identifying who those people are, if we made it and seen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Totally. The children that were doing it, they're great.
Right, well, thank you so much for that. What I'll do in that case is if you've done that and we've got the names, I'll get you an update as to where we have to find the rescue agent. No, thank you.
First problem.
Yeah, thanks very much. With having very clearly talked about the hearing, what would be if we go to the town hall?
I'm sorry about that because I actually thought I was shouting as well.
When do you see we're going to have six new offices?
We're going to have initially twenty six new offices for the force area. Right, so that is only small numbers for Stanley and you could say how many will it be? You may be talking five or even under that. However, what I'm saying on the back of that as well is there will be more officers coming in time. But in terms of where you've had your abstractions, because you will be aware in your areas, not there all the time. Where local councillors, local elected council, our PCSO went three weeks ago, it's never been replaced, she's never been replaced. Those abstractions now are the priority of the chief constable and the police and crime commissioner to fill that post. So that's taken priority.
Which is me, oh, the.
No, 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 you will get some additional, you will get some additional. But you're also getting the guarantee that we won't be abstracting from those teams. So say for example, if you've got an establishment of ten at the moment, we will not be taking any of those officers away without replacing them. And you will get some additional officers as well. So you might get eleven, twelve, thirteen type of thing. So you've got a small increase, but the other side of the guarantee is you will not lose any. And other areas of the force can't simply say, we need more response, sorry, neighbourhood officers into other areas of the police, like they have done in the past. You're more guaranteed to keep the resource in the neighbourhoods. So it's value in the body on the beach.
But do you just have to reset that to only only be neighbourhoods?
Yes.
And are they only be the mix of P C S O and P C, or they're just?
You will have your full complement of your team. So if you had, for example, six PCSOs, you will have six. The increases is going to be in relation to police constables.
Right, okay, and just one more question, do you mind if? And I think I heard you say that there was fifteen hundred people around about having engaged. Out of a massive population in County Durham. To be, to the consultation with the correct. What's your office's feeling, your office's feeling on that low number of engagements? Or such a fact? You know, can you?
Yes.
And do you really feel that it reflects this of all counties?
Yeah, I'm with you, I'm with you, I totally understand the question. The first thing is, the fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred responses was on social media. In addition to that, there was over at least, and Dawn will tell me better, I'm going to say thirty community events. And out of those thirty community events, there was a lot more consultation. So at some consultations, there might have been a hundred just at one event. So potentially thirty events times a hundred consultations, then on the social media side, there was the fourteen hundred. My answer to your question would be, we want as much information on priorities. I think that's the best information we could get because clearly we went out on the social media, we went via the media, we went to the events, we went to community events, we spoke at events such as this. We went to partners, we asked everybody. But I always want more information, the P C C wants more information, does it represent what the priorities of the public are? Please, you tell me tonight.
Okay, I'll, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say this, this is definitely a guest to the public. I live in the age, I would say it's almost all on the same path, I'm with your class. And then getting those notes and you know, for the same, to the police unless we're separate from the situation.
Yes.
So we're in a relationship. And you all have the report, have this one happens, so goodbye, you're home online. Because we get so many to the door, but it's going to happen, we'll go at the same time. But I can process online and still then get into the sidebar. And the issues and the issue we guys that should like now.
Yeah.
So then I can still define what's sidebar, which is, before I give that time.
Number of things, over, I would say, the last couple of years, lots of complaints about contact in terms of the police. Eight one oh one, three nights, we've listened, there was at least fifteen more staff gone into the communications room. To make sure that we staffed at the right times to make sure we take our calls. In addition to that, we have introduced a new telephony platform to improve the rate in which we had to call. And we've got signal online reporting as well. What we intend to do in combination of those is to improve it overall. Some things certainly in terms of the timing of the three nights calls is certainly improving. The abandonment rate of the one oh ones has improved. But if you were saying in terms of the online reporting, you have difficulties in terms of the way you're reporting or whatever. That's the feedback we want. I'm not going to say tonight that everything is perfect. What I'm saying is we're improving, but if there's particular areas that you have difficulty with, that's what you've got feedback and I, you know, I put that across the board. We want that feedback if it isn't actually deliberate. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to offer a range of reporting to suit everybody. We know that some people don't like to use I T, we've got that available, should people wish to grow that area. You're going to have your local resources, your local neighbourhood, if it's fast time reporting, you'll have to go by the communication centre, slow time reporting, then you could do through your local contact and your local neighbourhood team. We also create at this moment in time as I speak, a means of ensuring that when you want, Graham Hall's your local lead officer as an example. You want a particular message to make, we're going to make sure through the new online system. That we do have changes in place to ensure that the information, A, is checked to make sure it's not urgent. There's no use ringing for Graham Hall for urgent action if he's three days off. But we're going to make sure, we'll triage the call in columns to make sure if it's urgent, it gets an urgent response. But if it doesn't, that will then come to Graham Hall and the neighbourhood team at Stanley. And that will be my, in my inbox to contact you with whatever issue it is. So if there's particular issues, so I'm trying to illustrate how we're trying to improve things across the board. But if there's certain elements that we're not getting right, please tell us, please tell us because we have regular contact, as you'd expect, with chief constable. With the teams who are developing these products and if we need to tweak them, change them, learn from the public where we're getting wrong. It's your system at the end of the day.
And also, is there anything, um, to many students passing through during the day at some point? But there were almost generational, almost same, but we're like, that's how it is, it shouldn't be five, six, seven, eight, nine, or twelve.
Right. I'll, I'll, I'll let Dawn come in in a second because she's dying to say something, but no, no, it's helpful, Dawn. But I think that the way you've got your neighbourhood guarantee now, it's that management, the big place is, is what the public wants. You want that physicality, you want that contact. So hence you're going to have the officers, hence you're going to have the neighbourhood officers, hence you're going to have more contact. How you have that contact, in my opinion, is to be worked upon between yourselves, your councillors and the local neighbourhood team. It can take place at a meeting like this, it can take place at ten o'clock in the morning, during a tea and coffee morning. It can go to the church, it can take place in the town centre, it can take place anywhere. Provided that you, your councillors and indeed any other stakeholders and the big team agree that that's the best way to do it. Some people, you may like a couple with a copper, you might have heard of that, you know, some people have gone at the town centres. We acknowledge that different people, it may be that you wanted it in a certain area of the town, then, you know, or a certain area. We can arrange all these things, we can do whatever you want us to do. You're welcome, thank you. And thank you for the feedback as well, which we'll pass to the PCSO. Because sometimes, ladies and gents, it's nice for the PCSOs and your big teams just to get a bit of feedback. Because obviously you get quite a number of concerns, rightly so, complaints, but where there's some good work, I'm sure your, because your officers. I'm sure they appreciate that feedback too, so thank you. Dawn, sorry, you just kind of mentioned something.
Yeah, just on the thing about the pack meetings, they do do pop up packs in Asda with the neighbourhood wardens as well. But again, if you're not on social media, I appreciate it's, it's more difficult, but we are encouraging that we drop in the coffee mornings and, you know, just be more visible in general. And I think again, the neighbourhood guarantee, that's what you're going to see.
And that's a good point, Dawn, because, you know, if we're going via social media, people aren't on social media, we've got to adopt other methods to try and get that message out to relevant people. So you've got to help us with that. So if you're in a certain community, we'll be asking the question, what's the best way to inform the community about this particular venue? Because we need you to help.
Last, Chair, in the back.
Hi, Michael Ward. The question maybe about the gentleman, say, you understand the attitude. Because I'm aware that there's someone that regularly rides at speed on an electric bicycle, which is a bit unnerving. Sometimes there are youngsters that are too weary that I know someone's come and commented to me that we felt intimidated by that. Is that something that, that the local scene can look at or monitor?
Can I, can you justify the ten o'clock, will, will be able to answer that for him?
Okay.
We are in discussion for the minute with John County Council regarding that, something to do with a bylaw that is set up. So we are just, I actually had a response from them just before I left, I haven't had time to read it, but we'll be updating as soon as we can with that. And we are on with that matter to ensure because it's come up quite a lot with people feeling unsafe with cars and bikes as well, where they're driving up and down the front street. So I assure you, we are dealing with that issue, so thank you.
I'm aware of the British League Council, well, some of the street, there's, there's a section of it, they, well, I think it is prohibitive.
So sorry, just to answer that, we'll be working very closely to perish in that, we're aware of some of the concerns that you like to raise it. And I know that the local neighbourhood team are aware of the problems, when I mentioned what's also includes these schools and everything else. So there will be a lot of activity done, we're clearly moving extremely well here to get the joint response, thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, slightly, with regard to the, the speed bar and such like. Over the decades, I have been caught a few times, but nearly, just recently. What I did was I decided these down the shops, there's always. What I did was I decided to whiz down the shops, because I was doing nothing. And there was two P C Os. And I've got a warning there. I just want you to know that that is a very good complimentary deterrent as well. Because I saw, I thought, I thought, yeah. And then later on, I was talking to my mate about it. And he says, you know why I said it? Because you thought, I'm going to whiz down the shops. He said, you should have said, I just go down the shops. Because I've gone and made a whiz and just. And that was why I thought it might be worth while next time you have some kind of advertising campaign with speed. Take that into consideration to pass on.
No, I'm very.
A very complimentary warning.
And I'm very grateful for your raising that because I was at a meeting this morning with Durham County Council about, um, strategic road policing. Um, and that's actually what was discussed this morning about people's behaviours and how we can. Manage people's behaviours and how we can challenge the fourth process. And I don't want to get too technical.
Awesome.
Yeah, but, but it's changing how you think basically about when you drive. Um, and that educational process that you went through, that's gratifying to know. And that, you know, it's, it's, it's worked in your case. Um, so thank you so much. Yeah, but it's, it's an experience. And, you know, the community speed watch fans, uh, that go around. Aimed at trying to educate in the best possible way. I mean, we all know the tragic consequences of what can happen in a road traffic collision. Uh, and I don't need a rehearsal tonight. Um, but we want to work with the community. We want to. Make sure that we get the right messages out, like what you've just said there, to reduce those levels. So. Again, it's, it's using every means we can, communications, media, uh, word of mouth and, and campaigns as well. Um, you know, so, so thank you for that feedback. Yeah, exactly right. Much said.
I'm going to give the last question to Carol in this season.
Well, I'm a local resident of the County Derby area. There were a lot of things that we hear people saying, it's apathy, why are any of the police there dealing with them? We used to have a system whereby the police on the regular basis came to our local community centre. And you say, say to people, if you've got a company, you can't see them, you can't do that, it's horrible. Any ideas of a match?
Yeah, and it just links back to, to what I mentioned before in relation to. Whether you call it a, a pack meeting, whatever kind of local event that you want. Your neighbourhood team, you will have a named officer. So Graham Hall is your named officer. And Graham Hall's responsibility is to make sure that it gives the opportunity for the community, for the councillors, to come along and have a chat. You might not want to chat in public, you might want a private conversation, that can be arranged as well. What I'm saying to you is that we will have that footprint right away over the Stanley area and surrounding area, in the villages and also in the town. And we will, I'm saying we will, we will arrange to engage with you and your community in whatever form we want. It could be, I mean, I think of a hundred and one, uh, local events that you might have, and we can come along with that. We can't come along to every one of them. Because if we did, they're not doing exactly what you want them to do on the street. But if you said, well, there's a monthly meeting in our community, and it's on the back of a school meeting, or it's on the back of this, it's on the back of that, or it's a special meeting. We would oblige to come along and we'll, the, the inspectors can.
That was, this, we had an afternoon at the community centre twice a week. The way you wouldn't get people coming out for leaving.
Yes.
When they were on the afternoon, and they were coming home with food.
Yes.
They were all past the shopping, the grocery.
And that's a great example of where you can do it. And I have no doubt that we will have police officers who could come along. They wouldn't come every week, twice a week, they might come once a month, but that would be enough, wouldn't it?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. You've got that communication, that relationship. And we also, Dawn's recording all the information that we've talked about tonight. To make sure that where there's issues raised, we feed all those back to your neighbourhood inspectors. Yeah, so that they can then engage. And after I finish tonight, if there's things that aren't happening in your community, because I've said a lot of things. And you feel we're not getting that engagement, uh, we're not getting that visibility, you must tell your local councillors or indeed, you can contact the P C C's officers themselves. But again, I will welcome the feedback. Yeah.
And I can agree with that, um, really good question and answer, Sharon. Uh, I'd like to hand you over to Sam Clay, um, who are from a community service. And we think so, we, we have this one going quite well. And thank you, Sharon, by the long, sweetest evening, and for your sweetie, um, um, shout out. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm Diane, um, the coordinator, who coordinates the delivery of the bike services. And Sunny and I sold a lot of money along there, and he remains on the main part of that funding. And so it would be very fortunate, obviously, in Stanley, that Sunny Town Council have been in since twenty eighteen. And, and that's got, kind of, a lot of, because rising values, which has brought a real good collaboration. Um, and if we are on a council venue, Stanley has had a service of residence of standard. And despite you leaving County Durham, it's kind of a one stop shop that answers, um, and. And we have a truck on there, there we go. So just for those people who don't know, um, Sunny Advice for Bill Stanley, that's what that book says. So, um. Karen Parton, we've got to do them from the seven of the mornings, we've got H U four chapter. And we've got John Hensport, we've got Goodback in there, who does speak. And we've got Community and Money Advice. And who do drop in appointments. And we have citizens advice in there. They have also rearranged points to drop in. We have John Malcolm right service, which is quite the unique, lots of face-to-face service, but not one that has in the county. And that there one day we find a face service. And then we also have the new commission services through Dashing, where you're going to make them sound despair. But, next, sorry. And so what I just wanted to do is give a quick overview of what those collaborations achieved in the last year. So, um, since April twenty fourth to March twenty five, um, there have been two clients being space to your services. And debt advice clients, who's not many, they go actually, it's like, yeah, it's. Um, the debt management with last forty nine thousand two hundred pounds, which is quite substantial, I'm already missing, um, dollar. And total financial years in the area, that's six hundred and eighteen thousand, hundred and twenty three pounds, which is over half a million pounds. Just coming into the residents of Stanley, which is quite phenomenal. And two bad vouchers, seven hundred and eighty five, and then part hundred to split fisheries, and then two hundred and fifty seven fuel vouchers. And. One, we're using what is here, one hundred and seventy. About what's happened, all right. I'm probably more leave, there's not. Um, so I just wanted to kind of address some of the issues. And actually, there's a couple that I've missed off there. So I'll touch on them ones first. And wind fuel payments being a huge issue. I know the age of the people being in debt, there's been this around that. So they had a lot of worries potentially around, um, pension credit and can we be entitled to it, just to get that wind fuel payment? And that will continue on on the. You turn on that one period in the past. So, um. Universal Credit, so, um, universal twenty three coming in since twenty seventeen, but the migration process is almost at an end. So. That will end at the end of, um, September this year. But we've had a lot of people who've been coming in, who've been unable to have that face-to-face support. So there's a national service that provides by citizens, basically universal cost payers, but that's all the fun. So what we found is that a lot of fighters in centre have those people who apparently, as I said, which is the most vulnerable, we can really. Being coming in need of that support face-to-face. And a lot of people are coming in, looking at a paper, just passing the penalty statement. To try and maximise the income, because people are still struggling with the cost of living. And. Also, and particularly, and please erase this as well, is that there's a lot of people who've applied for kit and applications taken fourteen months across. So they currently work in, just, they're completely around that. And so I think although people are applying for kit, the new applications are coming in quite quickly. But the, those people who apply for it, sometimes they're waiting for quite a long time. And debt wise, I will clarify here, I believe we've got a bit more on that, but. What we're seeing is a lot of our homeowners and people who, um, have mortgage worries. And, and people are really struggling with their essential household bills. So it's not kind of, it's not your, um, historic kind of loans and credit cards. It's a lot of household bills, you guys, the electric, um, water and things. Um. But we're, we're seeing a lot of people who are actually trying to get benefits for the first time. So people who've been in white for a long time and then don't know how to navigate the benefit system. Um, and we've seen that people who're coming in, they're actually getting generated more, particularly doing one side service, so generating, um. Got benefits and then that means they're bringing back a lot, which is a weird thing. Um. And then we're kind of having decisions on benefits overturned by mandatory considerations. So. Think all in all, that topic works, it really works, and really much of, that's all. So I'll find you over this quiet, um, venue, from advice.
So, so, a bit maybe, all right, I'm Claire. Um, I'm on a, the community advice, which is one of the products from the venue. So, um, as Sam says, we've been there since twenty eighteen. So we've been doing quite a lot of work in the community, with our, we've got two colleagues there giving debt advice there. We, we just wanted to give you a little bit of a, a flavour of the type of people that are coming through. So we're just, you can see it on the screen there, but it's just a very short case study. About people that are coming through. And that's recently about Lee, we saw that we don't have two disabled children. And then she's fallen behind with things like her rent. Um, and the utility bills were really bothering her as well. And she had mental health issues. And this is kind of quite a typical sort of case that we're seeing. People, the last few years, particularly utility bills, being very hard for people to afford. Um, and as I said, usually over time, it's household bills, people falling behind, rent, water, council tax, the energy is particularly a problem. Particularly in trying to negotiate those payments. It's not always easy with energy providers to manage easy payments for people to afford. So our debt advisors are qualified with the S C A and they're able to do something called a debt relief order. Which are available to people who are non-for owners. So in this case, this lady, when she's falling behind with her bills, we were able to do this debt relief order. Which meant then she didn't have to repay that bill, but also it helped to have more money in the pocket going forward. So she was able to manage her finances. And as you can imagine, people that comes through in debt, they're very burdened with their debt and health is usually suffering. So this lady, the work that we've done with has helped her mental health as well and, and helped her finance through. So just puts that in perspective, you know.
On the website, that's just some nice little wall of ours, which I'm glad you guys are that really, yeah, and. And then that's just my contact details and any questions, if you have any questions, darling. Couple of things there, so go on. Appreciate it for them. Thank you for, John Park, for the red. I don't think. Hello.
Um, it's a lot of rights, people packed out, a lot of rights, especially the, the family. Um, it's an amazing service, it's something that, you know, I've been doing, I've. My opinion is we should like to be able to be, well, I'd like to pay sort of a site for this sort of ability. If I have strips, more people probably see it, those, but it's an amazing service and power, I agree.
Thanks, very much. But you're done, yes?
So, um. I think if we're starting to come, come from, being, being to, was wanting to you, um. A good woman. And who, it's from selling, kind of, a time, if they were there, you know, often we need to go, so. But we're, we're saying we're all good. They're all good.
Be, be worried, Tom. Twenty nine months, you're addressing that, I can't wait. So let's move on to the next, let's move on to the next question. We'll move on to Jessica Ben. And it's Debbie from Leicester.
Yes, quite good, I will. So my Linda was my big, the only take is panel that just got them set up, but unfortunately she's still number that one. Health issues, it meant, um, so she's not, she's not here. So. We come today to give you a little bit of a oversight of what we do in Stanley. So she has given us moments from the telephone, we can. So I'll just read through it. So it just, it's been, it's been two thousand and eleven, um. I think, I think it's over ten thousand people who've seen in that period of time. A little bit of, um, what was it? From April twenty four to April twenty five, we, um, had. Seven hundred, can I say, no, let me go, put them on. Seven hundred and twenty eight women and young people and forty eight men in that period. And we support men, women and children, um. Through all forms of abuse, whatever the struggle and, and we've got one of the largest council services. And we have eighteen. Host councillors. And we've also got hooks in different areas as well. So. We have hooks in Durham, we've got in the Recknettle. And also in the Methodist Church in Durham. We also work alongside, we've got contracts actually through, through the Ministry of Justice. That's why we've got the whole books there. And we also work with the local refuge and have a little bit of a contract there. Going and giving them support and counselling. And. So that means. So we do work alongside, obviously, partners. And so the police, we did with, because of the police. Around domestic violence and sexual violence. And possibly other local ones. Packed out in positive carbon, we have some in trouble, and the list goes on. And. So we were asked, um, we were given some, a little bit of a contract because of the, we were listed. For counselling and because of the work that we do around, whether it's rape, sexual assault, historic abuse, and because we miss as they. I do, or, um, or that, which I think we miss. So I didn't know there's to be a weakness for one, so we were asked if we would take the. A little bit off, off what else, you know, maybe a little bit over still, uh, for them, so. In parents' mother. I don't normally do this, you know, it's just a. Um, so, yes. So we get a lot of referrals in from Rassat, Victor Kay, um, Cam's, often the young people. I know there's a four or five week gap weakness to get kids into that. So that's why we built on our counselling service. And we do pride ourselves on our counselling service. So we can get, you know, whether it's. Man who know, or a child who, you know, if they're into any form of abuse, rape, sexual assault. You shouldn't have to read, that's our policy. We need to get them in as soon as possible. And then wait for, and we're on the phone to think positively, you know, and we'll work together like that. So Linda's told us to talk a little bit about ground highlights. The highlight is Linda got a, won. His scholarship, um, for global wellness. She's now an ambassador. And all the world, global wellness, and she works very closely with it. And then very interesting, what were the works that we do within. The Stanley area, especially around mental health, teen well, teen wellness. Trauma, abuse and, and around chronic illness as well. So I think they try and do. Work together to put something together, to bring it back in the stands, something new, but if that's not clear, if you're disturbed. Um. Yes, absolutely. I think that's my done.
So here, yes.
As my speech, we have the crack, we manage it, we're a support worker. One of the directors, which is from the centre. And I work alongside Public Health to do, um. To help on a walk outside Stanley. And the people I come get to Stanley. Which is, that's some of the lines I was maybe the common. So it's the problem, I've, um, disabled friend, yes, I can't say that, cannot.
You know, they were.
So what do you, where, just a sort of people who mean James and short sighted people that's kind of dying of. There's a lot of women who use it simply because they're lonely. There's an awful lot of lonely people out there in these places that need to, because the people are, oh, I've got fifteen, I'm going home on a Thursday. And we made friends with each other, go out, interact with each other, and then we go on our places with each other. But wasn't believed, you know, that is. It's so many other things we don't, we don't, to do that. So I concentrate on that, but the absolute, when care, what they have, that's the trade. And we do the same thing in Stanley, but it's, it's, it's bigger and intense.
So I understand.
Very, very.
Yeah, so I understand, we don't, it is just around counselling. So there is, there's a lot of workshops. So there is, there's a lot of workshops, there's a lot of around anxiety and also resilience, domestic violence. So there is a lot of workshops that everybody can use. Also, we have, and we work on, we work with many local schools as well. So we get the young girls that come into our centre, a lot of maybe struggling. And whether it's, you know, confidence, self esteem, or whether they've been through other, you know, within the families, domestic violence or there is volume going on. So we work with them and give them the support and all for them, they're going to pay the rent. And but there's a lot of that, all I'm going to say, and I have to say this, for the most part, this, she want, she wants us to come along. Yeah, she wants us to come along, see what we do, thank her a lot more information and like as I was on the spot, like I feel like tonight, so. And then Linda can explain, Linda does all the funding, society, you know, and everything like that. But just come on and free all of them.
What we do is to ensure that everybody needs support, gets support.
Yes.
Do you want me to, and we'll try ourselves in the being continuous as well. Not just like a three year period after six weeks, where we continue with it. And I think that's a reason why it's, yeah.
Yeah, we've been waiting for a long while. Because subs very ones. Yeah. The braces click, it comes back.
Well done, we did a fine job.
Four five, every year we will still be, how could people be setting, get people to counsel, because of that rich. And if you had asked that question, maybe it's October ten last year, and I would say probably two or three wrong. Oh. I'm the council manager, so I sold everybody out and obviously I tried to prioritise on what the issues are when people are coming in. So it is trauma or whatever, then, yeah, they move to the top, do you know what I'm saying? The young people and getting straight away to be fair, yes. Anything in Southie, or do you want to? No, you can, anybody can do a sub referral or, you know, doctors, I mean, we get referrals from doctors, publishers and we, anybody, anybody can refer in. Your own questions. Of this. Last, but by no means this, the ladies in packed house, and I can I ask Darren to introduce. It's Brian. And Brian.
Um, no, I do think in the practice, so I'm with, we speak very much before and I talk about that subject. But what I wanted to do is basically a lot of people, some people think that, some people volunteers, some people volunteers and then they employment, some people just people that's at practice over the years. So we've got Hannah, Mark and Tom Jay, Grant, we come up, Lucy, you go up to it. You can do well, Simon, Kenny. And Brian's one of our trustees, he's very sad as well. And briefly open attention and packed house, seven days a week, three sixty five days a year, a triangle, it's impossible. Tuesday, Christmas Day, Boxing Day, New Year's Day, bank holidays and Sunday, Saturdays, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. So probably an eighth day of the week if there was one beyond them. And first off, thank you to the town council. Historically, you've been a great supporter of what we do, it's a two way relationship, we support all your initiatives, all your events. It definitely works as a community organisation, also thanking these ladies and Linda, I don't know what age she is. And there's a beauty and a brutality to what we do. And we definitely let more than cried, so a few tears. So to reflect that in no particular order, I'm going to ask whoever would like to go first and just speak about packed house and their experience. Grant's itching because.
Uh, God, what do you think of them? Number twenty three and before, sorry, I'm near, I'm near where there's no. And before packed house, I was, as you say, like, I was like involved with animal social behaviour, drugs and I thought it was a life where I didn't really need like what I've been. If it wasn't for packed house, I'll be honest, I'll be kicking in on the curb somewhere and probably picking up the body in a ditch or somewhere. And I know that's a bit high brutal, but I feel like there's an underfunded with packing, not enough recognition for players and not enough awareness for the youth. And I think it's, it's just kind of like hard, like hard to put, like hard to put in the words how much it helps me. And before, like before came a pact, I was going to be dreaming and I'm currently undergoing a diagnosis for ADHD and autism, which is taken. And we have been told the word, this is how it is, yes, to the NHS, which used to be five years. And I didn't even get a social worker until I came to pack and they're down with the like support of a sport alters. So if it's, if it wasn't for like a place like packed house, I would feel like I would spiral down to like a lifestyle where I wouldn't want to be. And I feel like we need more awareness and more, the word, I can't think of the word, more money. So I feel like so like recognition, that's the one, there's not enough recognition and especially like, I didn't really know about packed houses until I went to Vision Support Housing, never, I'd never heard of it before. I feel like we need to also let the younger generation who, maybe to go through, at least at home, to know like there's places out there. So maybe they can speak in schools and like big and like awareness, like there is places, like packed house out there. And it's probably a good idea, but I'm not sure.
Ah. You know, you're in the sort of, you're. When I first found out about that, like I was, yeah, I was like a doctor who I didn't know if I was going to be here the next next year or not. And if it wasn't for like Darren, Paul and like the rest of their staff, I don't make that even be here now. But like they're doing to need a lot more like, like the likes of Darren goes through, he teaches here for people like they, it's like me and the rest. Like it should be like a war for that because it does, and I absolutely like, I don't like it, like a really tremendous, I have an amazing job, like the, the likes of Paul as well. Like I'm, like I've been in like thousands of people, but I've been in the walking house, through like there's like the help of town. And it's really nice to help people like that, like actually from a like a young, young, up, like a young, up upbringing where it was just all crime. And there was no, no helpers, it was either you do work in the times upon the fringe or it's like getting buried. That, but it wasn't for like Darren, I'd probably still be on that route. But they do need more and more like appreciation for what they've done.
Um, my name's Ella, before I started the door of that, so I was very, I'm a full on, I was one of the one. Um, so my dad bought that flower, so he's just sitting in front of the garage and I stick it to anybody and now for all the path, I've got that anyway. I have currently have a favourite and I'm there, just being with the hell of them, what is it?
He wouldn't have done this.
No, he wouldn't have done this. Um, I help children be aware, so help a parent through all the people who are around the place, they're in the information. Who are avoiding, something down, we want people, speaking to people in places, I've never been before, can tell, we're crying there. And that's it really.
Hi, Chris, I'm, we packed house up for over five years now. And I was, I was like a shy, younger man and he wasn't really, yeah, speak to anyone and it was through castles and really help something. And then I found like, uh, by his, by Ryan in his group and like, you know, they're not confident to speak to us, but like a smaller group. And then I ended up finding a name a group called Pack House and that made it all great. And that's a safe space for people who are socialised or all ages, uh, who are feeling isolated and they're lost at home. And over that, I'm like, they'll talk about over five years and we've got people who are more confident to come to the centre or if you refer to the pack, uh, house, packed house. And if I was to say people are happy now.
Hi, I'm Frankie and volunteer at Packed House. And so when I was younger, I had a colorful childhood, there were citizens, not a school, which I had a really bad relationship. And and this school just wasn't there and I eventually ended up, I was chopping, lodging, ended up in Stanley and just go to Packed House. And it's my interest because it was what would you have had for an hour gender? We've stuck with connections, there's not a great amount of, but the reality of this course just wasn't there. So while I learned about packed house, I started all of it, started all the hearing. And and it's just, it was a personal choice at the time. And then it became part of my life and it then became part of my children's life because of the resources that are available. And the fact that it's my mother, yeah, the child who lives there, that's just well, if that is, that was not to break or whether it's and we just went to the area or you get your own life, you love the ice and everything, probably jump into the concrete, there's like siege fires, laws, laws. Packed house, finding ones, you find someone in the top or in or we can use translate rocks on the pass, we actually have Luke here. And, and we should, eh, come in there, have a lot of that, because you talk to someone that sounds familiar. And so yeah, the main part houses was what means part houses all because it's what I hear you ask, you are them, whether you're rich, whether you're unbroken, you may, whether you're a little bit. It's like, and then I've seen because there's no like boundaries on our food bank, incrementate or our free food, uh, fresh food bank and stuff, which is essential part right now. Means even we're letting people work, I mean, it's our food bank. And there's all that, and then it's like, low income families that don't qualify for like preschool tourism and stuff. They know that we can work some before transfer, I like, I don't know, so it's, yeah, it's not a human, not a human mind, so.
Hello, my name's Martin. Um, I've had ten years' experience in an advice capacity, Sam knows me very well, can she interview you? Eight of those years, I'm now a happy volunteer member of Darren's team as an advisor. I've helped, you know, with advice. I have recently had a client who was, who felt foul of the complicated universal credit rules. I persisted for weeks with, with a job centre who didn't realise those rules existed, such that he now gets the four hundred pounds that he was entitled to. I've helped seventy five year olds pensioner make a complaint against her energy company. When British Gas, or it was they, when British Gas completely blanked her, she was happy for me to take that to your husband. And I represented her there, she won her case and several hundred pounds, say several thousand, several hundred pounds of compensation. I've helped a twenty five year old vulnerable woman with physical and mental health conditions who was refused the right to bid on housing, you know, for choice based evidence and Darren key options. I helped her through the appeals process and she is happily in a bungalow of her choice. I help with pretty much anything, I work, help with debt and I signpost people for money advice and I don't do immigration because the home is won't let me. But apart from that, I won't just let him.
One of our trustees, but you also want our H nine radio call here, so.
I do, yes. So those of you who don't know what H nine radio is, it's, it's basically a pack house, it's right at the top. So unfortunately, some of our listeners struggle hearing that sometimes, but we are a community radio station. We're based online, so we can broadcast comments, the half standing right out across the world. We have listeners from all over the world, from America, right, going through China and so on. Well, we do tend to find there's a majority of those listeners are people who are originally from Stanley, you know, probably you get here. And the, the project itself was actually Darren's idea.
I'm contacting the initial radio station sponsored by the town council nearly a decade ago.
So I got so, I was like, well, it doesn't sound like, and it was, I lost where it was, oh, that man. So I have a little bit of a memory condition. Uh, but yes, he contacted me because he knew I had a little bit of experience with the H nine thing, brought them on board. And the idea was essentially giving people of Stanley two things, a voice that they could, you know, speak out about the sort of things they wanted to talk about. And also creative outreach for those people who, whose interest was in music or writing or so on. Because the radio station doesn't just deal with music, but we do a lot of music shows and it's any kind of music you might have here. If you want to come and volunteer, so we pump the horse, we'll train you and show you how to do that and how to show you on. Um, but we also do a lot of spoken word content. So we do things like reading plays and we do readings of stories and people's poetry and we'll have it. So that the people of Stanley could create a that sort of area that might want to, to reach out through the radio station, get their players, stories, like poetry and so on out to the world, we're there for them for that. But over the time we've been going, we've also developed contacts with the colleges at Durham. We do a lot of work experience where, and we've found, excuse me. We've found that now we're able to train people in media, both sort of the technical side of things and the presenting side of things. But we've also found a lot of those people have gone on to work in media or studying in, I was a real level and so on. And we have a few, uh, they came to us quite young, but they're, they're, they all have, they've gone on, studied in Durham. You know, some of them have gone on to work in media as well. Uh, we're retaining all the terrorist staff, but as I said, some of them obviously have done, they were, you know, with other stations. And some of them still come to us, do the digital things, right? We're open to anybody from the sort of Stanley or even why you don't say area that wants to volunteer. Um, as I say, you can tune in, you can hear us anywhere in the world. You just need an internet connection, it's dh9radio.com or dh9radio.org. Um, I can think of a few of them all of them. Just saying about that, does anyone have any questions? I'm the one doing it.
You did, in, in the past, packed house did not look spoke of mental health without realising it. When it was pointed out, you kind of look back and you think, yeah, we've done this all along. And with the Durham mental health, well, the lines have been created, we got involved with that. We have a project called Think Positive Durham, which is based in East Stanley, seven three. It stepped a little bit away from packed house, but sometimes it's a perception of packed house is for people on benefits or it's society people arguing very well. And we're mindful that mental health is nondiscrepanous. Uh, Jake heads up the Think Positive Project, he was employed by suicide mine when that hold did around COVID. He's a local guy, he knows the stuff, he was operating a task and probably worked for us, does amazing job and he's, you know, hitting in the cemetery, walking, he's all, he's just going to come out and keep his vision. He's been so well, you'll just, you know, a big tear in your eyes, so no pressure, Jake.
Thank you. So as I said, I was to increase the dedicated mental health service for packed house. We began formally working in the office in the cemetery early in twenty twenty one. And basically the services that we provide are a dedicated support and recovery service for anyone in the local area who's experiencing negative mental health and distress. So we can provide talk and therapies, these can be in the form of counselling, one to one counselling or listening here. We also provide a range of, um,